Okay, six o'clock, let's uh, thanks for, yeah, it is, actually. Thanks, thanks for coming this evening and please stand and remove your lids and make sure your cellphones are muted and in.
Joining me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What do we got for day today's the seventh? Again, thank you all for joining us this evening on October seventh for our Yankton County Commission meeting. Patty, please call the roll.
Dan.
Here.
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 Here. Now's the time, any commissioners have any conflicts of interest?
I have none.
I don't have any.
I have none.
And I have none. Can you get a motion to approve the agenda? First of all, we have a couple of changes to the agenda. Uh, we have no poor relief this evening. And we also have number eight, uh, we have no, no OEM. I'm sorry, that's not correct. It's the number seven, approve the OEM agreement with Bonhom County. We do not have that on the agenda. They've have rescinded their uh, uh.
Offer?
Offer, so.
This, sure, could we, could we do a short?
Certainly.
Executive session.
Could we do a what?
Short executive session for personnel with no action being taken for that, could we do that?
Yep. And also I'd like to make a statement on the, the Bonhom, the OEM deal with Bonhom County is, you know, the state has, has been talking for several years about counties collaborating on certain um, things such as OEMs and, and other issues and we uh, worked into an agreement with Bonhom County and then come to find out that the, the reimbursement of the OEM uh, position per, for the counties from the state office of emergency management would not apply to, to this position. So Bonhom County actually decided, uh, since there was no, no reimbursement to them for, for collaborating like the state wants us to, decided that they were gonna just hire another uh, deputy sheriff and, and let their sheriff's department take care of their emergency management. So, so it's one, it's another one of those issues that the state has kind of shot themselves in the foot and is, in my mind that, that yes, we, we're supposed to collaborate, but at the same token, they don't want to help us out to do so. So, just to put that, to put that to wrap.
Would have actually cost both of our counties more money to work together.
Certainly so.
I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. I have a motion by Wanda, second by Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, Ryan's on now?
Did you get that?
I am here, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Ryan. Now's the time for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individual or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Per county policy, the Yankton County Commissioners will not engage in conversation or make statements during public comment. Uh, we got anybody that would like to come up to the microphone and speak during public comment? No one has signed in. I see nobody jumping up to, uh, run up to the microphone. Public comment is closed. We have a legislative audit is at six ten and
we should be.
We're, 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 we're good to do that, so uh. You're up.
Turn your microphone on. There you go.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Uh, I'm Jeff Shaper with Department Legislative Audit. I'm here to do the, the exit interview for your twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal and compliance audit. Uh, at this point in time, it's, uh, it's in its final stages and its final form. Uh, we're getting, getting typed up in peer now, but I've, uh, put together kind of a management letter, if you will. And that just summarizes the points, uh, that I'd like to bring up, bring to your attention. There were other items of real significant nature that I just talked with appropriate personnel, but there was one of them here. Uh, if you'd like to go to the second page of it. And it has on there deficiencies noted and that's it, that's the right one. Okay, um. This is in the uh, uh, audit, it was the deficiencies noted internal control we didn't, which are significant deficiencies, which is included in this current schedule of audit findings in this report. We noted internal controls over the financial reporting for years twenty-two and twenty-three were inadequate, resulting in inaccurate information being presented to the users, the financial statements. Uh, we recommend the county strengthening controls over the financial reporting. Uh, this is, this is further discussion audit finding twenty-two, excuse me, two thousand twenty-three dash oh one. And if you'd like to look at the finding, this is the third year when we're all we've had a fight, except finding for reporting errors, what it is. No cash missing, anything of that nature. It's just reporting errors, reclassifications and stuff like that for. And if you'd like to go through that, I've given you a cop, copy of it here. And it talks about the uh, same criteria, the county system controls designed to, uh, county system controls is designed to provide accurate preparation of the annual report. Was inadequate, resulting in numerous financial uh, reporting errors within the annual reports prepared by the county. This is the third consecutive audit for this uh, finding. And um, we had just twelve items on it, the twelve formal adjustments that we had to post. That were either material or need to be made for proper reporting. Um. You, the county has the option if they'd like to respond to this comment. If not, then we'll just put the said county show up to respond, so. All right, um, any questions that you guys might have on anything as we go along, you sure can? Ask if you need to, but other than that, if you go back to the management letter, uh, there were no other items noted that were significant in nature. So.
Okay, which of the two is the management letter? Cause I have three pieces of paper.
One of them is.
I have the internal control over financing report and then two letters dated October seventh, one with eight points and one with four points.
This is the finding that was going to be included in this is the audit comment, the internal control over financial reporting. That's the audit comment. Okay, the other one says, um, starts out on, on page one that says, uh, in planning and performing the audit of the financial statements, so on and so forth. That's the management letter. And then all of the items that, uh, are nuts and bolts of the closing conference were on the second page. And we just discussed the reporting errors, uh, comments that we had for the. That's all we had. So otherwise everything went pretty good. Did the financial report, we did a, for the ARPA money, went through all that for the feds. Good to go on all that, so.
The misappropriation or, or what, whatever was just basically some, some errors in should have been, this, this expense should have been classified as this versus what this was.
I, I had the same conversation with Patty, uh, changed, didn't change cash, didn't change fund balance.
Right.
It was where from one, basically there's interest expense that should have been in the pension area or vice versa.
Yep.
That type of stuff. In cash, we should have been investments, you know, that type of thing. That's kind of what it comes down to.
Yep.
So, uh, not a big thing, but the number of errors requires us to, to put it in any, as a significant deficiency, so. Other than that, that's really all I have for you. Unless you all have a question. All right.
Anything else from the commission?
No.
Thank you very much for your time and coming down here to Yankton and
Yep.
hopefully you enjoyed your, it was a wonderful day to spend.
It was a nice day, yeah. So, no, we're good to go, so.
All right.
Thanks much for everything. I got all signatures I needed, so appreciate it.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, moving on. Mike, we have the approve of milling bid. I need a motion to accept the audit report.
Move to accept the audit report.
Second. Motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the audit report, the state audit.
With no comments. With what? No comments. No comments.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Mike, you're up.
Yep, uh, here this summer, we had a, uh, did a profile mill in North Leesterville and we had, uh, millings piled to surplus. We had one bidder and he bid ten and a quarter for millings.
Got a good price, fair, fair?
I'd say it's in the market.
Okay, good. But we just need a motion to accept it?
Yeah, motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept. Go ahead. Accept the, uh, milling bid?
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Don to approve the milling bid for the millings that, uh, came off the north of the Leesterville road. One comment, I'd, just part of this, for discussion, the, that quote is within, pretty much within reason. And we do have IMEg coming down to measure the pile and, uh, calculate the, how many tons are in there, so. So, that, we'll, we'll have to wait till I think they're coming next week or this week sometime.
This week.
Late this week to measure that up and, and get a, a final number, so we know exactly what we're, we're gonna be bringing in, but that's a, a good deal that we're, we're actually saving those millings and selling them and, and, and getting revenue off of them versus just running them in the ditch like we did three or four, five years ago, so. Okay. Need a motion to approve that?
I move to approve that.
I think, I think we did that.
I think we just need to vote.
Okay, okay, yes, that's correct. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Then, uh, five-year plan. Need a motion to approve that?
So move.
Got a motion by Don, second by Dan to approve the five-year plan. Any, uh, discussion by the commission? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. The Paul. Approve the OEM L E M P G agreement.
Now, it's this time of year again to where we've got our state contract that allows us to get, receive. Well, the contract says fifty percent of our salaries, but right now they're about the thirty-five percent. Uh, but it's, uh, something that we need to get approval from you guys so that we can go ahead and get the contract back and move forward. And it's same paperwork, our same language. Other than that, the percentage is a little less.
Yeah.
Real lot less.
Paul, and from what, what I understand is, uh, the state has really expanded its number of personnel at the state and, you know, when I was up there in, in, in peer talking to them, I don't think, they're not losing any employees. They might even be gaining some. And, you know, to me, this almost seems like it's a grab where the state is grabbing more of the monies that, that should be going down to the counties. And, you know, what was, what was really surprising to me as well, when I met with these people is that I, I think around thirty-three counties have just basically given up on emergency management. And so what they're doing is signing non-participation agreements where they're not doing any type of planning or any, they just, they'll appoint somebody, the sheriff or the auditor, who knows who, as the emergency manager, and they really don't do anything. And, you know, I think that's just a shame.
Right.
That this is a valuable service to plan, to protect public safety and lives and, and approximately half of the counties aren't even participating in, in anymore.
And, and my question then is, so all that money that should have went to, for paying that, where's that going?
So why are we, why are we losing out? We, we're still participating. Yeah.
But you're, you're correct on everything you said there.
And I, from what I see, I mean, this is at least thirty-five percent now and it, and could even be more in the future, so we'll just have to probably be re, re care, very careful, but this doesn't seem like it's a fair thing, cause this, from what I understand, this is federal money that now the state is just keeping in peer. And now you're probably, you're gonna have to pay more in property taxes now because peer is keeping more of the federal dollars.
Yeah, now these are off, this, this L E M P G is a federal program to the state.
Yeah.
So.
And it was also to help bring in every county so that they could have that kind of service to help them out.
Have the feds cut, cut back on it?
Excuse me?
Have the feds cut back on the appropriations?
They, they, I have never seen what our state gets for appropriations. They say the feds are cutting it back, but I, I can't honestly tell you that, yes or no.
And even if the fed is cutting back, our state isn't cutting. And even if the Fed is cutting back, our state isn't cutting back anything, their state is maintaining and expanding what they have. And we're being forced to cut back and it's just, it's uh, I guess a sad situation, but we don't have a choice but to approve it. Right, I mean, so. I guess we'll.
Got a motion by Don.
Okay, I'll second Don's motion.
Second, second by Dan to approve the OEM L E M P G agreement with the state of South Dakota, so any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, Paul.
You bet, thanks, Paul.
Yep.
All levies for next year.
Where's?
Have not been approved.
Where where's, is it in the art nine?
Okay.
In the packet.
Got it. All right.
And they just haven't been approved yet, so there might be a change or.
We don't need a motion.
We just need to talk about it?
Just that I presented it, yep.
What uh budget levy? Tell me a little more.
That is the levies for the county general, uh, the uh government buildings, road and bridge. Um, from the budget figures.
And that's from the cutbacks may have affected that? I think uh I think it's our responsibility as commissioners to uh tighten up our financial management uh of the budget and uh uh I would propose that yeah, coming down the road, we have set up a system whereby we get uh quarterly department head uh presentations on their budget and where they're at. But that's for further discussion.
I thought we talked about that before.
Not that I heard.
I thought you proposed it before that we would do it quarterly, that department heads would come in and talk and say where they are on their budget, whether they're spending as projected under or over as their projections.
Well, if I did, I did. But it's just a.
You know, maybe a a strategic planning session at some point, um, because I I think the reality is that we did make some cuts, but I mean, it's not over really and and that the in my opinion, I don't think the cuts are gonna save us, it's just.
We cut approximately a third of the shortfall.
Yeah. So we still got a big shortfall ahead of us, yeah, I would agree. But may- maybe a a strategic planning session at some sort down the road to look at what we're gonna do and and it's eye-opening when we had the five-year plan of how much um how significant going from a seven million dollar highway to a five million. How much that's gonna affect roads and bridges and the projects that we can do and the services that we can provide.
Absolutely, and I think it's, I think it's gonna affect the services just as much as the the roads and improvements on the roads and bridges, so.
Did you need a motion, Patty, or just presenting? Uh Patty, from what you've seen, you know, as valuations increases, levies generally go down as well, I mean uh have you, have you seen the levy over the past few years? Are the the levies going down or?
I think tapering off is probably the same, cause you know, it depends on two, on what the total of the budget.
Sure.
And what we need to raise, that increases or decreases the levy.
Got it. Patty, and in this process that we went through, did each department head uh identify where the cuts were gonna come from?
I think.
And how much they would be?
My office, most of them did all the cuts and the operating expenses.
Hey, did did we identify which which operating expenses would be cut?
Supplies and utilities that will never go down.
Okay, so, yeah, and you told.
I think the majority of it was supplied, maybe some travel.
Utilities is only gonna go up. So I would like to see uh a reporting process where people identify which which area they're taking their their ten percent cut in so that we can follow up and see if they actually took those cuts. And I think to do that, we have to have uh uh a task force or something set up to do that process.
Think we kind of already have a task force and I think you're the in charge of that. And Dan, you worked with, you worked with Don also on that.
Yeah.
And and I I I think we could also look at uh maybe some someone else from the community. You know, like, like we talked earlier, a few meetings back where many Haha County has business people involved in in working with their budget, so maybe um, I don't I don't know how big.
Bob's already volunteered.
I don't, yeah, and I don't know how big we wanna, you know, get this this for for now, but.
You you know, maybe a a strategic planning session emphasized emphasized on the budget and we we can kick around these ideas on what we're gonna do and then come to a, cause Don and I can agree on something, but I really think it might be best for the whole commission to have buy-in on. Cause we have time now to work on stuff and get it ready for for next year.
Sure.
But uh it, what do you think of that, Don?
I agree.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm, this is serious enough that we have to, we we have to know what's going on. And right now, we don't know what's going on.
We should, I think we should be able to get um uh some information on where each department has cut their ten percent, I think. I think we're, I think Patty and and from what I've heard from all the department heads that they they did make the ten percent cut, I agree that we just need to figure out. We need to know where that ten percent cut was was made from the original uh proposed budget.
What was the total cut, Patty?
It was almost um a million, but it was a million.
So we thought it was a million five when we when we passed the.
No, the one that I made a motion for was gonna be a million two and that was uh voted down. And then Ryan made a different motion that it be operating expenses, John seconded it. And that's the one that passed, so there's no way it could get up to a million five based on operating expenses.
I I think if 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 the numbers showed up, it was right at nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I believe is what the actual ten percent cut on operating expenses was. Does that sound about right?
Well, I'd like to know where that nine hundred thousand is gonna come from. And I'd like to also have a procedure that department heads uh explain uh where there have been deviations.
What do you mean deviations?
What do you?
You mean they overspend?
Yes.
Well, I think I think all the department. I think all the department heads have submitted their budgets with the ten percent cut, so I think we can look at that and see where they're making their cuts and three months from now, we can see if they lived up to those spending cuts.
Except that's on an annual basis, we need it on a quarterly basis.
Oh, I'm I'm saying do it on a quarterly basis, I'm okay with that.
But we don't have any, we don't have any evidence from the department heads which quarter they're gonna make their cut in.
I think it'll be throughout the year.
I don't, why not every quarter, they just well I think they provide their information to Patty and Patty has a little spreadsheet thing that she sends out to us that shows where they are. Don't you?
Get a, yeah, there's a report in the every month.
Yeah, so.
It doesn't show where it was spent though. Exactly.
It's so, what, you mean like Hy-Vee or Walmart's? What, how how definitive do you want it?
I wanna know where the money's going.
I mean, isn't that what the claims are that are submitted every month?
Well, no matter that, in the format that we get it in, I would have no idea in the third quarter, what was spent in the first and second quarter.
We can go back and look.
I don't wanna do that, I want department heads to do that.
Okay. So are you making a motion because you're gonna have to put it on the agenda if we're gonna vote on it, so that'll be for next time?
I'm I'm in with with Dan on having a strategic plan.
I I think that'd be good for us all to to get together and and I think we realize how important it is to probably be on the same page, all of us. And we have, we have time now to work on it and uh good things are brought up, the Financial Action Network, look at these things and, you know, come forward with a plan on how we're gonna address it and I don't think you know, it's it's not just cuts, it's other revenue sources as well and that's the only way to to get a balanced budget, which is what we need to do, so.
Hey, now can we move on to meeting minutes?
I'm good with uh, I get a motion on the September sixteen.
I would just, I would just have one thing, um, I read in the newspaper, the September sixteen meeting minutes and it says that I made a mo- motion to transfer twenty million dollars into the highway budget. I think there's just, the newspaper put one too many zeros in there, but the ones that are in the book are correct, so I would make a motion to approve the ones in the book. Not the ones in the newspaper.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Da- Dan to approve the September sixteen, twenty twenty-five minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
I don't know. The one in this book is correct, so that's all I care.
I can guarantee you it wasn't twenty million dollars transfer.
No, I did not.
Yeah, so, but I just thought I'd correct that in case there was somebody in the viewing audience that saw that as well.
Motion to approve September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes.
Motion by Dan. Get a second to approve the September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five minutes.
I wasn't here, so I don't think I should move to approve them.
Second.
A motion by Dan, second by Don to approve the September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
I moved to.
Motion pass.
Sorry, I moved to approve the claims.
A motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the claims. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Uh, Don.
Minutes, September sixteen?
Yeah.
Minutes.
Wanda and Don?
No, Wanda, Dan, and then it was Dan and Don for the second one.
Does right, yep.
I would move to approve the September twenty twenty-five payroll.
Second.
Motion by Wanda, second by Don to approve September twenty-five payroll, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have a an abatement? For veteran?
Motion to approve the abatement.
I assume that he just missed the deadline a lot.
No, I think it's just the veterans uh are are way behind.
Yeah.
On stuff, so that's why it was.
Okay, then I would second it.
And then for the discussion, I think Wanda's exactly right, we run into these where the the due to no fault of the veteran, he did everything on time, it just is, it wasn't processed and so.
Yeah. Motion by Dan, second by Wanda to approve the abatement for the veteran. Uh, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Move dollars to unassigned. Contingency transfer?
I.
Or is this two different items?
Yes, yep.
I would move to approve the dollars to unassigned.
Second.
A motion by Wanda, second by Dan to move the dollars and this is for the new ambulance chassis that we're purchasing for next year.
And since the there was no vehicle in this budget, um, we'll have to take it out of the contingency.
Out of the what?
Contingency.
Well, I thought.
I thought we.
Well, I thought I was, we were told that this would, he had the money in county accumulation.
He was, he was short five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Seventy-seven thousand is what the thing costs and seventy-two is what he had, rev link.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Okay.
Well, the thing, he didn't, but they didn't budget for this year.
Correct, yeah, so I think the last one, that's an important thing to remember is that we haven't done a county accumulations for the last couple of years, so they're not gonna be able to do it this way anymore, so. All right, if it's, if it's just a few thousand dollars.
Well, it's that hundred and seventy-one.
Yeah.
For the whole.
Well, I guess what we were told is that he had the money to do it.
In the accumulation.
So how much?
Accumulations, that's where the money is, but you still, you still have to have budget. To spend that money, cause there's no budget in there.
You mean they still have to have an authorization to move it?
Yeah.
Not budget.
No.
We don't wanna use that word budget.
Well, you are from move moving a hundred and seventy-one dollars out of contingency into.
That particular fund.
Yes.
Okay.
It's still in the general fund, but.
Are you, are you talking uh county accumulation or or the county can?
No, you have to do both, you have to mark it unassigned from being assigned. And then move it, cause we have to have a budget authority.
But I think, did you wanna make a motion and I seconded it?
Yes.
That was for the.
The unassigned. So all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
And now we need to.
So now we moved, now we need to take that money and send it to the ambulance fund, is that correct?
Correct.
Motion to assign that money to the ambulance?
Second.
Contingency transfer.
Contingency transfer to the ambulance.
Correct, so I have a motion by Dan, second by Don to approve the contingency transfer to the ambulance for the new chassis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Do we have to wait till six fifty for the public comment?
No, no, nothing's.
Now's the time for public comment, do we have any further public comments from the audience? Again, I'm seeing no one rush up to the microphone, public comment is closed, commissioner updates. You got any updates, Wanda? Ryan, you got anything?
Uh, just a few things, uh, we're going to look at replacing the uh uh server backup, um, essentially canceling a service, replacing it with a new one, um, and trying to capture in the sheriff and state center and uh state attorney's office. Yeah, so they're backed up properly and safe. Um, and additionally, we're gonna be in ID, we have uh might have the, we'll have to go through about thirty different endpoint computers that have Windows ten, which is going obsolete, so uh, we'll have to make decisions, so we'll make a decision on how we're gonna deal with each one of those, uh. Some of those might just be pulled out of service entirely. Uh, we just really don't want to spend money on computers that we don't need, so we're gonna be uh doing some of that work this month.
Okay, anything else? Okay, Don, you got any for us?
No.
Um I have nothing either.
Motion to go into executive session for personnel.
A motion by Dan, second by Don to move into executive session.
But we have to vote?
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Aye.